Seven o'clock and I got the thumbs up that we're ready to start. This will be our first.
Recording in progress.
This will be our first tryout of the new technology that allows us to do this virtually remotely like this, so patience would be appreciated if we run into any glitches. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order, note attendance, and we'll begin with our agenda review. And at this point, if anybody has any recommendations for updates to our agenda, that would be good.
I move to add an item to the end of the agenda regarding planning for superintendent evaluation.
So moved. I'll second that. I think it would be appropriate, given that we haven't had a chance to really talk about it after the last meeting. So moved and seconded, any further discussion? This would become item five, I believe, E on the agenda.
I don't think this needs to be anything long, just short.
Okay, moved and seconded, Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, thank you. At this point, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as just modified, including what will become, I believe, five E, which is a brief discussion of the superintendent evaluation.
I move to accept the modified agenda.
Second.
Second.
Just moved and seconded. All right, Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
Perfect. All right, now, we are here in Scotts Mills and we have a presentation.
Welcome, everybody. This is good. Welcome to Scotts Mills School. We are excited to have this kind of time to have clean up in our campus and having an event in our gym. So it's most really exciting. We are going to, first I want to just recognize, as you may have noticed, we came in, there's lots of flowers planted, we have a dark dust, which is not typical in March. Usually you'd do that in August with our eighth graders. Last week, or last week, we forced to break our sixth and seventh graders, which is out of our school. Again, another very exciting event. And so our eighth graders wanted to do something at school, and so they did a kind of school cleanup, oh, sorry, a school cleanup day, and so they planted flowers, red bark dust, and they took such pride in it. We were really proud of them. So that was exciting. Um, we actually, I'm kind of excited, this is a perfect timeline, because when I presented to the school board, I think it was in February, I talked about our ancient China unit and our project-based learning around that, and our STEAM grant, and I did mention, I think, that we were making fireworks, and that was not what was happening. It was actually, it was a flame lab, and I was there, I supervised, it was good. But we connected all around ancient China, we talked about like the Olympics being in China, and then ancient China, and then also the Chinese New Year. And so connected that with, they learned a dance in, well, they actually designed a dance in PE, they learned about China and social studies, did lots of writing, our second and third grade classes did, created drums in the maker's space, and they drummed, and we had a whole school performance. We had lots of dragons, lots of them volunteered to come, but these are our dedicated volunteers. The other ones realized it was still spring break and decided they'd rather stay home. So I am going to turn it over here to Anthony in a second, he's going to introduce the dragon dance, but first I want to introduce, we have Hazel and Summer and Felix, Hazel and Summer, sorry, Hazel and Olive and Felix Summer, and they're actually a new family to Scotts Mills, and then Little Sister Goldie will be here soon, and the amazing mom who brought them down today because we needed our drummers. So they are going to drum, and then we have Kyle Doomer and Anthony Baru, and they are going to do their dragon dance that they designed, picked out the music, created the dance, so it's really neat. But I'm going to turn it over, Anthony, do you want to read the introduction, and then I got to play DJ.
Hey, everyone, it may be a little late for Chinese New Year, but we are, we will be performing traditional Chinese dragon, well, lion dances today. The dragon dance originated in China during the Han Dynasty thousands of years ago. Dragons are a symbol of power, luck, wealth, prosperity, and wisdom. The dance is a very important part of Chinese culture. Please enjoy this performance today.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Ms. Jorgensen, thank you so much for coming, having your kids present tonight. One of our own, Daniel Vasquez, was a student here at Scotts Mills, and he left Scotts Mills in 2017. Could you tell the board what was Daniel like as a student? We're just interested in that.
I was only here for one year, Daniel. Because I didn't go to school, and he wasn't the least seen to see. Not quite, if you figure, but I come to work with my sisters a lot before they contest her degree. But I can say like the pride that, because the teachers that appear to have, and look at Daniel, that's like today Helen's here, Daniel's setting up, and just watching at our actual school, very rewarding, the teachers to see.
And board, just so you know, this new setup that allows us to go remote, the whole design of it, all of it was Daniel's idea, working with Derek McAlfreson. Daniel, we're very proud of you, and keep up the great work.
Indeed. All right, well, thanks, guys. So that's going to move us to item number four, it's a special public comment. We don't normally do these during work sessions, but as we travel out to the various outlined schools, we're going to set aside some time for this. And when we do it, we're going to try to prioritize Scotts Mills residents and people affiliated with the school, and so anybody who'd like to address us is welcome to come up here. As is typical, please state your name, your relationship to the district address, etc. And I believe, Daniel, we are capable of bringing them on, okay, we can go both through Zoom if somebody's remote, as well as in person, but we'll start here in person if anybody wants to address the board tonight. No? Anybody online asking?
Nobody's online, raise their hand. No one's raising their hand.
Okay. Well, I will move us along to the next item.
Daniel, can you promote Melissa Cypher-Briggs?
Oh.
I believe that's the next up item.
Sorry, I just realized, Debbie, I think we ended up now with item five got moved, I think by accident, at least on mine, item five, I think is meant to be the last item.
Okay, okay.
Five and six, seven, sorry. So I'm going to move us to eight discussion items, at least on my version here, which is, of course, our policy updates, and we have a number of them with first readings tonight. And so, do you, Scott, or, I don't know if Melissa wants to, and Janet's not here tonight, do you want to give us an introduction as to how we're going to go through this one tonight? I couldn't remember if we were going to adopt sort of the new policy starting tonight, or if that was starting after this batch. In other words, are you guys going to go through these and introduce them, or are we going to?
Yes, yes, our plan is to go through these, the same process for the next couple months.
Got it.
So for the next, for the next couple months, we'll go through a similar procedure, although the cover sheet has changed a little bit, and Melissa will walk us through that. The whole idea here is that we're starting to take down the scaffolding.
Right.
So that when we bring updates that have been prepared by the policy work group, we don't have to have our volunteers spend the amount of time that they've been spending this past two years, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa, for being here.
All right, well, the first one up is GBEA, workplace harassment. It is a, go ahead. Currently frozen.
Anything else from the summary? No.
So, I don't know, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, because you were frozen for most of the last, maybe 20 or 30 seconds.
Sorry, my internet is not very stable right now, apparently. So with my internet not being stable, I'm not sure if you want me to go through each one line by line, or if you just want to kind of pull up the summary that we gave you, and if there's any questions?
I think probably the most prudent option tonight is for us to go through them. I'll name them off individually, and we'll see if the board has any questions for Melissa, and if so, then we'll see if we can connect with you.
Okay.
All right, so the first one up is GBEA, workplace harassment. Any discussion on this one? Anybody have any questions or concerns? All right, next one up is IBDJA, relations with homeschooled students, and there were a few updates, they were fairly minor, really, it appeared. Any questions or comments or concerns? All right, the next one is IGBAF, Special Education, Individualized Education Program. Well, there are a couple of interrelated items, there's the procedural safeguards and the AR that's associated, any discussion on any of those? Talented and Gifted Program, IGBB. Okay, IGBHE, Expanded Options Program. Okay, next one is IGDJ, say that fast, and it's Interscholastic Activities. This is one that I had a few questions on, and I guess for just transparency, I know there was an email that went out, one of my questions was, you know, this allows students from, homeschooled students or private school students to participate in public school programs. Sports would be a common one, there are other examples, including curricular activities. And one of my questions sort of was, well, what happens if, let's say you've got, I don't know, a homeschool consortium located in Silverton District that includes students both from, say, just outside of the border of Silverton, and those just inside. I mean, we have students already attending our public schools for those same reasons, both from Woodburn and Salem, I think primarily. And so would those students be able to participate? And I think the answer I got back was under policy, the answer is no, they would have to participate in the sports or curricular activities of the district they reside in, as opposed to the district they're, let's say, a private school or a homeschool consortium that's in, right? So that's just, it was a good clarification, I was curious how that worked out, and I can appreciate why that would be, I do. So that was one of the questions that I had asked on that one. Anything else on that one? Okay. Next one is IKFB, Graduation Exercises. The next one is IL Assessment Program. Okay, the next one, JFCJ, Weapons in Schools. Need to remember which one of the two this one is, there were two of them that were related. Maybe either Melissa or Scott or Dan, can you remind me whether this, one of these, there's two that are interrelated here, one of them, well, I'm rereading the summary while I'm speaking, so maybe if you, if you know it off the top of your head, that would help me.
Yeah, so this one, JFCJ, is a current one, so this is just an update to the current policy that we have. The new one is KGBB.
And the change for this one is based on the other one, is that correct? Or is this one have changes no matter what?
I think there are some changes in this one, no matter what, but some of them do have to do with the new policy.
All right. So any conversation on this one? I'm actually going to bundle the two together for the purpose of conversation, because I think they're interrelated. So any conversation on either of these two?
And just for clarification, one is more towards student, and one would be more all encompassing, correct?
I think that's right, I was going to try to pull up the markup version here.
So current JFCJ is really just addressed towards students, because, I don't really know why, but it's just, just towards students, but with KGBB, the new one, they would both be addressed to everyone, I think.
Okay, so one of them, it sounds like, Erin, JFCJ is, as you said, primarily aimed at students, whereas the other one, which is a new policy, would be more broad, and would address the option of districts to allow concealed carry permits, which had been banned, as I understand, by state law, and no longer is.
No, that's, that's backwards. So currently concealed carry is allowed on district property. The new law says that districts may prohibit concealed carry, and that would be.
So it's the opposite of that, okay.
Right, so that, the new one is KGBB, and it would prohibit concealed carry on district property.
Thank you for that, I think I was confused about that. Discussion, comments?
And again, for clarity, the state law does not prohibit. Correct?
That's what I heard Melissa say. I actually thought, based on a prior conversation, that wasn't the case, so, so that's good to understand, I was mistaken. So if we do not, let me, let me ask it differently, if we don't adopt that new policy, what is the status of the district? Maybe that's my question, I'm still not following that.
If we don't adopt KGBB, then students could not bring firearms to school, but people with concealed carry permits that are following state laws could still bring concealed weapons to schools.
Which is what is the case today?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay. All right, based on that, any further conversation on that?
I guess based on that, I would just say that I would be opposed to adopting the new KGBB and prohibiting concealed carry holders from carrying on, on our property. So I would, I would be in favor of maintaining the status quo under state law.
You want to talk about your reasons?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about some of the reasons. One of the reasons is I don't think that there's any evidence that I'm aware of where concealed carry holders have unlawfully and improperly used firearms. So I think it's a personal right that people are, have, and I don't think that we as a government entity should abridge that right. I believe that concealed carry, I mean personally believe that concealed carry is a positive thing generally, and that concealed carry holders, as far as I'm aware, you know, haven't, haven't, you know, been a detriment in any way, anywhere across the country, again, that I'm aware of.
Can you elaborate on the positive aspects?
No.
I guess I have more of just a, kind of along the lines of, just, if, if we, if current policy is by the state that it doesn't prevent it, I have a, I have a hesitation with putting in a policy that would, that would go against the state unless it's, you know, unless it was mandated by the state. So I guess mine is more in principle than I'm having a hard time adding in a policy that would, that would restrict something that the state does not currently forbid or prohibit.
I think one of the things that, maybe it piggybacks on what both of you have said, but I don't know what problem I'm solving if I adopt this policy. So to that end, I don't think I would be in favor of. Any other comments on this one? All right, well, this, I mean, these don't come up for final vote for a while, gives us a chance to double check some things, make sure we understand where we are exactly. And I guess we'll see where the board is as a whole. Okay, everybody ready for me to move on? Any other comments? Okay. Next one, JHCCF, which is head lice essentially, policy. And the last one, LBEA, Resident Student Denial for Virtual Public Charter School Attendance. Any comments or questions? Anything for Melissa? Okay, well, you got off pretty easy. Thank you, Melissa, really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you.
All right, that's going to move us to five B, which is Transportation Proposal Presentation, and I think Steve, yep, you're going to lead us.
They're going to be cheerleaders in the back.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize, I had a written summary of my notes here, and I'll insert it in my folder, so I can access it from my phone, but, but just going to take a few minutes to introduce the purpose of tonight, and what we'll be requesting at the April 11th meeting, and we're very thankful to have representatives, two representatives here from First Student who I will introduce here in a few minutes, so. So First Student is here tonight to highlight their vision and plan for Silver Falls School District, starting July 1st, 2022, moving forward. We're excited for you to meet them and hear what they have to say. I just wanted to explain a little bit about the process we've gone through over the last four-plus months. We had a, a transportation work group that, I'll tell you who was involved here in a second, but we unanimously graded the best out of three proposals, proposals that were submitted, was submitted by First Student, and they, they averaged out of a possible score of 200, a score of 173.1, and the closest competitor graded out at 142.4. Like I said, we started this process planning back in December, and we had 10 members on the work group, we had Kevin Palmer, Buick Creek Principal, and Part-Time Transportation Coordinator, and Heather Johnson, District Route Coordinator, who are here to help support any conversation we may have, or answer any questions that you may have after the presentation. Dan Bush, Assistant Superintendent, Marcella Sprower, who is an Office Assistant at Silverton Middle School, Brett Davison, Principal of Silverton Middle School, Dana Peterson, our Director of Special Services, Kim Dowd, Controller, Brett Davison, Silverton Middle School Principal, James Rize, Assistant High School Principal and Athletic Director, and last, and myself, but then last but certainly not least, Tom Buchholz, joined us for this whole process as well, and Tom may have some comments a little, a little later on. Proposals were due on March 4th, and like I said, we had three, three vendors submit proposals, including First Student, our incumbent Durham School Services, and a, an upstart company out of California called Zoom Transportation. And interviews of the two finalists occurred on March 15th, and then reference checks and final due diligence took place between March 16th and March 18th. Last Monday, the 21st, the official intent to award subject to board approval was, was issued to First Student, and we thought it would be appropriate for them to share what, what they're proposing to us here tonight, so that you have some time to ask questions, digest the information, and our ask tonight would be to place this on the board agenda for the April 11th regular board meeting, and for you to award a five-year contract to First Student Transportation, and it'd be a 90-day transition period, and they'll tell you a little bit about what that, what that would look like. Just as a refresher, for those of you that may not know, the district was with First Student for many, many years, under different business names, through the 2015-16 school year, and the spring of 2016, we did a process just like we did this year, and at that time, we elected to go with Durham School Services. But when I mentioned the scoring, the scoring was based on eight different criteria, ranging anywhere from safety, to their fleet, to responsiveness, to driver recruitment and retention, presence in the state of Oregon, and just, just to name a few. And First Student won, won this, this scoring by, it was unanimous amongst the, amongst the scores, so. Anyway, I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I think what I'd like to do now is introduce, and I really appreciate them being here tonight, we have Tim Wolf, Director of Business Development, and Andrew Good, who is an Area District Manager for First Student here tonight, they're going to have 15 to
Mistaken. So, so if we do not, let me, let me ask it differently. If we don't adopt that new policy, what is the status of the district? Maybe that's my question. I'm, I'm still not following them.
If we don't adopt KGBB, then students could not bring firearms to school. But people with concealed carry permits that are following state laws could still bring concealed weapons to schools.
Which is what is the case today? Thank you. Okay. All right. Based on that, any further conversation on that?
I guess based on that, I would just say that I would be opposed to adopting the new KGBB in prohibiting concealed carry holders from carrying on, on our property. So I would, I would be in favor of maintaining the status quo under state law.
You want to talk about your reasons?
Yeah, I, I happy to talk about some of the reasons. One of the reasons is I don't think that there's any evidence that I'm aware of where concealed carry holders have unlawfully and improperly used firearms. So I think it's a personal right that people are, have, and I don't think that we as a government entity should abridge that right. I believe that concealed carry, I mean personally believe that concealed carry is a positive thing generally, and that concealed carry holders, as far as I'm aware, you know, haven't, haven't, you know, been a detriment in any way, anywhere across the country, again, that I'm aware of.
Can you elaborate on the positive aspects?
No.
I guess I have more of just a, kind of along the lines of just, if, if we, if current policy is by the state that it doesn't prove, prevent it, I have a, I have a hesitation with putting in a policy that would, that would go against the state unless it's, you know, unless it was mandated by the state. So I guess mine is more in principle than I'm having a hard time adding in a policy that would, that would restrict something that the state does currently forbid or prohibit.
I think one of the things that maybe it piggybacks on what both of you have said, but I don't know what problem I'm solving if I adopt this policy. So to that end, I don't think I would be in favor of. Any other comments on this one? All right. Well, this, I mean, these don't come up for final vote for a while. Gives us a chance to double check some things, make sure we understand where we are exactly. And I guess we'll see where the board is as well. Okay. Everybody ready for me to move on? Any other comments? Next one, JHCCF, which is head lice essentially policy. And the last one, LBEA, Resident Student Denial for Virtual Public Charter School Attendance. Any comments or questions? Anything for Melissa? Okay. Well, you got off pretty easy. Thank you, Melissa. Really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you.
All right. That's going to move us to five B, which is transportation proposal presentation. And I think Steve, yep, here you're going to lead us. They're going to be cheerleaders in the back.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize. I had a written summary of my notes here. I'll insert it in my folder, so I can access it from my phone. But, but just going to take a few minutes to introduce the purpose of tonight and what we'll be requesting at the April 11th meeting. And we're very thankful to have representatives, two representatives here from First Student who I will introduce here in a few minutes. So, so First Student is here tonight to highlight their vision and plan for Silver Falls School District, starting July 1st, 2022, moving forward. We're excited for you to meet them and hear what they have to say. I just wanted to explain a little bit about the process we've gone through over the last four plus months. We had a, a transportation work group that, I'll tell you who was involved here in a second, but we unanimously graded the best out of three proposals that were submitted. It was submitted by First Student. And they, they averaged out of a possible score of 200, a score of 173.1. And the closest competitor graded out at 142.4. Like I said, we started this process planning back in December. And we, we had 10 members on the work group. We had Kevin Palmer, Buick Creek Principal and Part-Time Transportation Coordinator, and Heather Johnson, District Route Coordinator, who are here to help support any conversation we may have or answer any questions that you may have after the presentation. Dan Bush, Assistant Superintendent. Marcella Sprower, who is an Office Assistant at Silverton Middle School. Brett Davison, Principal of Silverton Middle School. Dana Peterson, our Director of Special Services. Kim Dowd, Controller. Brett Davison, Silverton Middle School Principal. James Rice, Assistant High School Principal and Athletic Director. And last, and myself, but then last but certainly not least, Tom Buchholz joined us for this whole process as well. Tom may have some comments a little, a little later on. Proposals were due on March 4th. And like I said, we had three, three vendors submit proposals, including First Student, our incumbent Durham School Services, and a, an upstart company out of California called Zoom Transportation. And interviews of the two finalists occurred on March 15th. And then reference checks and final due diligence took place between March 16th and March 18th. Last Monday, the 21st, the official intent to award subject to board approval was, was issued to First Student. And we thought it would be appropriate for them to share what, what they're proposing to us here tonight, so that you have some time to ask questions, digest the information. And our ask tonight would be to, to place this on the board agenda for the April 11th regular board meeting and for you to award a five-year contract to First Student Transportation. And it'd be a 90-day transition period, and they'll tell you a little bit about what that, what that would look like. Just as a refresher, for those of you that may not know, the district was with First Student for many, many years, under different business names, through the 2015-16 school year. In the spring of 2016, we did a process just like we did this year. And at that time, we elected to go with Durham School Services. But when I mentioned the scoring, the scoring was based on eight different criteria, ranging anywhere from safety to their fleet, to responsiveness, to driver recruitment and retention, presence in the state of Oregon, and just, just to name a few. And First Student won, won this, this scoring by, it was unanimous amongst the, amongst the scores. So anyway, I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I think what I'd like to do now is introduce, and I really appreciate them being here tonight. We have Tim Wolf, Director of Business Development, and Andrew Good, who is an Area District Manager for First Student here tonight. They're going to have 15 to 20 minutes to present to you. They do have a PowerPoint here, and we do have a clicker for you. So I'm going to scoot out of the way, and then when they're finished, I'll stay here, and we'll all be able to answer any, any questions that you may have. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Board members, Board Chair, Superintendent Drew, Administration, Community. We really appreciate you giving us some time with you tonight. I'm Tim Wolf, Director of Business Development. I handle the West. But more important, I want to introduce our Andrew Good. And Andrew, before he talks, I got to embarrass him a little bit and share some about him. He, he's shown such dedication and commitment to his job. And that was demonstrated back during the fires. He had Southern Oregon. And during that time, his team evacuated multiple convalescent homes. You ran 2,000, 3,000, 2,000?
Over 3,000 miles during evacuation.
3,000 miles during the evacuation. I mean, you run in 24 hours, just kind of another day for him. He's that type of guy. This morning, he got up, he, he spent the weekend up in Anchorage. His son enlisted, and it was his last weekend before heading off to basic training. So he went up there and spent the weekend with him, took the red eye to come down so he could join us tonight. So he might be a little bit groggy, but, you know, thanks for making that happen. And also thanks for the service of your son. So go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. So as Tim said, my name's Andrew Good. The more you get to know me, the more you'll like me. I'm from Ohio originally, born and raised on a farm. I milked cows. I've cut hogs. I've butchered chickens. I've driven a school bus. I've driven fire trucks. So I'm well-rounded. And I love people. I just, that's, that's just the way I am. Less than five years ago, I was driving a school bus in Matso, Alaska. So of course, I'm the daring one. I took the canyon route. I would blow through drifts four and five feet high because it was a thrill for me. It was safe because I didn't have maestros on the bus at the time because I had to break through to get to the back 40. But I'm just that way. I'm very down to earth. I'm very transparent. You won't see me trying to blow a bunch of smoke around. I'm just, I'm just me. I'm just me. I spent a little bit of time in Matso. I lived there for 15 years. But I drove about eight months, and then I was asked to become a lead dispatcher. Greg Newman, our Regional Vice President, recognized some talent, I guess, that he saw. I'm not sure why. But he asked me to come in and be a lead dispatcher. About nine months later, I became Location Manager of our Seattle operation, which has 353 outfits and over 400 people. And 16 months later, I became the District Manager for Southern Oregon. So I now have, thankfully, to our new partner of Silver Falls School District, I'll have 22 school districts, 14 locations, one college, one university, and anything. So.
And you live really close to here.
I live in, in South Salem. So my backyard is county-city line. So you will see me out there quite a bit. I, I'm just that way. I'm, like I said, I'm a people person.
Okay.
Did you turn it on?
Oh. No, it's on. It's on. It's on, but it's not going forward or backward.
I'll control. Just let me.
Okay, I'll, I'll just wait. I often, you know, my usual is to bring printed copies just in case I didn't have time. So we started off by looking at your priorities. And what's really interesting about these four priorities is they really match up with our priorities and, and also our strengths. So, you know, having a high, being highly responsive, driver stability, technology, and then site management too. And you can go ahead and change it to the next one. But I wanted to start off and, and just talk about, yeah, we, we took care of you up till about five years ago. And you left us at that time. Well, since that time, a lot has changed at First Student. So about four and a half years ago, we had a new COO. And they recognized the issues that were going on here. Because I don't think you were the only ones that we lost at that time. So they brought in a new Senior Vice President, Kim Worster. And Kim, I, I gotta say, I just, it's such a pleasure to work with her. First thing she did is she cleaned house and made some major changes. Andrew mentioned Greg Newman. I'll be talking about him a little bit more later on. On, we've moved mountains when we need to, and he's just a wonderful resource. He saw that Andrew was a good talent and then brought on Andrew too. So that was really a, a refresh of the team, but it was more than that. It was changing our culture. They became, we became very more customer-centric, which is really being responsive to our customer. And that is really the primary thing that they're always talking about, the proactive communication. It's just, it's just key, you know, the ongoing performance excellence that they do. And go ahead and change it to the next one. I want to, the resources that we have to serve you make a difference. So we, we're all over Oregon, you know, 24 schools. The region office is just out of Portland. And go ahead, switch it to the next one. We got a few slides to get through, and I want to make sure we go through it all. But these are all of the folks that will be working with the district here. So it's a substantial region team. And when they're out there, in fact, I don't even stop by the region office because they're all out in the field. So they're working with the location managers. They're working with Andrew. So, and they're working with our customers too, to be responsive to them. So they make a huge difference. Go ahead and change it to the next one. I'm going to let you talk a little bit about our driver stability, what we've done.
Driver stability is really, really key to the success of getting our students to school. If we don't drive some seats, students don't get to school very easily. We live in a, in a very unique world nowadays. Both parents work. If a student gets left behind, students go to school. So it's, it's, it's very, very important to me that we connect with our drivers and have stable drivers at hand, on hand at all times. We have a very aggressive training program. We have six different training sessions, safety training meetings throughout the school year that they're required to attend. They have to meet ODE, all the requirements for ODE. They have to meet all their first aid requirements. There's just an entourage stuff that they have to meet. If we have a driver that is, say, part-time working, they have to complete a form on a weekly basis of their hours of service. That way, we don't get in trouble for them working over the allowable hours that are governed by the FMCSA, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Association. So we do stay connected with our drivers. And it's, it's important that we do stay connected through various means. And we'll talk about a couple of those means right now. We love to praise our drivers. You know, it's, it's, when I was a driver, yeah, you have five minutes in front of your location manager, five minutes in the afternoon, and that's it. It's, it's really, really important to engage the location manager and the drivers together to where we praise them for whatever the case may be. Maybe they ran on time. Maybe they went out of their way to pick up a child that got left because it was late to a bus stop. We really strive on making sure that we recognize going the extra mile. And in fact, Kim Worster, our Senior Vice President, put together a program. It's called the GEM Award. Stands for Going the Extra Mile. And on a quarterly basis, the area managers get together, review all the nominations that are submitted by the location managers of drivers that do various things. I have four drivers now that are up for nominations, two out of Lincoln County, one because of his swift actions when a student said he was going to shoot another student. What he pulled out of his pocket was a, a whiteout little thing like that, but pointed at the guy, and somebody screamed that he's got a gun. So the bus driver pulled the bus over, secured it, radioed for assistance. The cops came. The principal came. But his heroic actions, that's what it's about. So we recognize that. We, we go, we go another way by recognizing their performance and their driving ability. We'll touch base on that in a couple of slides, but we coach everyone. So we have what's called a mobile manager whereby it recognizes, there's a point system. You can be a perfect driver at a 5.0, and you can be a not so perfect driver down to zero. But basically, it measures four criteria: rapid acceleration, rapid braking, speeding, and idle time. So we review those on a weekly basis, the location managers do, and they coach the drivers. They don't sit them down and say, you were speeding, or you're braking too hard. They interact with the driver to find out what's causing that. Maybe it was a dog that ran out in front of them three days in a row. I kind of doubt it, but you never know. So we coach them. We don't tell them what they're doing wrong all the time. We coach them, interact with them. We'll bring donuts in. My expense account's horrible because every time I go to a location, I bring donuts or I bring a lunch for everybody. And it's just not the staff. It's, it's the drivers. I was down in Central Point a couple of weeks ago, and the driver said, you know what, Andrew, I really appreciate you coming out and sitting down with us. It just makes us feel like we're part of the team. And I said, you are part of the team. You are the team. If we didn't have you, we wouldn't have a business to run. So we, we interact quite a bit with.
You're spelling.
Wages. We know that's important. Let's talk about that a little bit.
Wages is important. So when I became the area manager for Southern Oregon, I really couldn't believe the wages of what we were paying our drivers. I'm pleased to say right now, out of my 21 school districts, 18 of them have agreed to a rate increase, to a wage increase. Almost all my drivers start at at least $20 an hour. In reviewing this proposal, we saw what the wages were, were starting at with Durham. So we decided to up it. So our beginning wage here is going to start at $23.10 an hour. The top wage is going to be $27.30 an hour.
It's based on a wage survey. It's, it's a very scientific process that we go through.
Yep. We have a compensation group back in Cincinnati that, that works with a company called ESI to pull our wage surveys for all of our positions, not just drivers, but for monitors, location managers, technicians. So it's a pretty thorough process. We just don't throw a deck of cards up the air and see which, which one lands. We connect with our drivers with our First Student Connect app. Each location manager has a sign-on where they can post news. I have a sign-on where I can post news to everybody. So I posted this just today, actually yesterday before I left. It's about fall. We're out of rain, or we're on this busy now, but we still have fall to deal with. So whoever, whatever driver has this app downloaded, they'll see this post. And so they can click on it, and it'll actually give the 10 different points they can go to. That's the way we communicate with drivers because if we don't, like I said, five minutes in the morning, five minutes in the afternoon, they're just a body. Nobody wants to feel like they're just a body. So that's the way we communicate with them. Anything that's unique, such as a driver found a sleeping child, we post on our First Connect. Because it's, it's promoting our drivers. It's praising them for doing a good job, a safe job. And that's what we really pride ourselves on is being safe.
It's really a wonderful tool that we wanted to stay connected with them during the summertime primarily because that's when you can lose them. Little did we know during COVID, it would become so critical, just getting them back together and keeping updated, celebrating.
A lot of our location managers use this during the time when no school was in session, just to stay in touch with the drivers. It's nearly impossible to communicate with 400 drivers in Seattle on a daily basis.
So, so pre-COVID, we were on, we were on the route of releasing tablets on all, to all of our locations. That slowed down substantially. We're back on it right now and releasing them to them. As a new customer, the drivers will be getting tablets from day one here. And there's really just, there's a lot to it. There's a safety issue there too, and I know you've been running them in a number of your locations.
Several of my locations have the, the tablets. They're great when you have a sub-driver come in. Sub-driver's never driven that route, this tablet's going to give them turn-by-turn directions. If a student doesn't show up, or if the student is not going to go to school that day and a parent calls in, the dispatcher go in and update that tablet. That driver didn't have to stop there then. They can just go right on by.
So, go ahead.
The great part is, we're not only concerned about our safety of our children, we're concerned about the safety of our community. So when you're sitting there on a two-lane highway, this busy with your red lights on, waiting for a child to run down the lane, and nobody's running down the lane, you just placed a lot of lives in jeopardy stopping traffic both ways. Because everybody's texting nowadays. Nobody watches what they're doing.
So Andrew mentioned the driver scoring. This is an example of it. And this has been the most innovative, successful program tied to technology I've ever seen. I go to a lot of our locations, and it's universal. We have drivers coming up to their manager on a regular basis and asking, how can I do a better job? It sounds unreal, but it, it actually happens regularly. Take it to the next slide if you would, and I'm, I'm going to let you talk a little more about specifically on this.
My Netfor location manager is all over this like butter on bread. She absolutely loves it. She has numerous drivers that, that wait for recording this out on a Monday morning. So like I said, each criteria, idling speed, hard braking, and rapid acceleration is scored. So they get an overall score, and then they can get an individual score for each of those metrics. And anybody gets an overall score of 4.5, their name goes into a raffle draw once a week. She has a raffle draw. And it's not just for, you know, a lollipop. It's usually for a $50 gift certificate for a meal or something. So people really look forward to this. There, there's, one of those things that we work on though is, it's, it's a moving target all the time. So we, we take a lot of input from the drivers because they're out there driving their route. So they may know a better way to go about getting to the stop that may reduce speed, reduce safety. So we work with them closely. We just don't say, no, you got to do it the way the book does it. That's the key of involving our drivers.
Another thing that we talked about during our interview was the special needs training that we're doing. I, I actually worked with special needs back out of college, took some to the Special Olympics and all. So I, I've got a great appreciation for it. What we did is we hired really the four professionals that are involved in this. Some of them are doctorates, professors. One gentleman actually was a superintendent, or principal of a special needs school. He saw that he'd started a transportation company, just handling special needs. And we ended up buying his company, and he's part of us now. And so we put our drivers and our trainers through this program. And it gives them tools so that they can better understand the children. And actually, ones that are having issues come up, there's wonderful stories about now they run to the bus. They're so excited. It also gives them the tools to understand the rage cycle and then how to de-escalate a situation. So it's been a highly successful program. We trialed it in, in Portland about three, four years ago. And now it's rolled out universally, and the response has been, been fantastic. So that was part of our, our discussion. Technology, we won, we've covered a couple of these already. We'll move on. Go ahead, go to the next slide. Do you want to talk about the parent app?
The, the parent app. FirstView is an app that our engineers developed whereby parents can track the bus. It's a wonderful thing. So they, each school has an individual code that's only given to the school administrators, and they can pass along to the parents. So you don't have just anybody logging on to our FirstView system and selecting the school and then seeing where all the stops are at. So you can see where your child is, stop is at. You can set different parameters, whether you want to get a, a notification that the bus is five minutes out, five miles out. We're working on the next system, which is where you can actually track an activity bus. That's rolling out here at this fall sometime whereby if your student is, isn't a hockey, I know you all don't have hockey down here, but where we have hockey, you can track that bus. And Alaska, it's huge because when Palmer High School would play Nikiski.
It's a six-hour bus ride.
Six-hour bus ride. And parents want to know where the bus is at. So with FirstView, the district dashboard is something that the district would have access to. They're the administrators of FirstView. So all of the, the building, heads of departments, principals, your superintendents, they all have access to this, and they actually control who gets access and who gets removed access. So if you have a, a husband-wife split custody thing and it goes sour, that principal would take the rights away from that one person to see where that student's being picked up if there's a, you know, no contact over there. So it's a, it's a great tool. There's a lot of reports that are available in that where the district can run the reports to see the on-time performance of the buses, where the route's at. It's a phenomenal tool.
You can even do push notifications to, by route, you know, to the parents on their, on their smartphone, by route, by school, or the whole district if you have.
This would work perfect. As we were told in our pre-bid meeting, that sometimes you cancel school for the foothills, but nobody else.
Right.
This is a perfect opportunity. We can jump on FirstView, go straight to the bus route that takes those kids and say, school's canceled today.
So I'm watching our time for you guys. We want to appreciate you giving us time. I don't want to go over. But another really important technology is, is we, we put GPS, we actually, we led the charge on GPS nationwide. We said we were going to do it about 15 years ago. And with that, that's given us a tremendous amount of information. And we distill it down for our location manager through this daily dispatch, which down for our location manager through this daily dispatch, which gives them visibility of their entire operation, red light, green light. So they know when an issue is arising so they can solve it before it becomes a problem. So all of Andrew's location managers use it. Andrew uses it. Greg uses it. Kim Worster uses it. Our maintenance person uses it. Go ahead, give some examples.
It basically measures our metrics on various things. Idling, on-time performance, buses leaving the depot on time. As you can see, there's a red circle there and there's also a green circle. We have certain metrics where school on-time performance has got to be 95% or better. You get a green circle, if not, you get a red circle. So we area managers kind of have a nickname of red light Nazis because we'll screenshot where all the red dots are at and say, can you please fix this? And so they'll go in, they'll dig into their dispatcher's queue and figure out what bus doesn't make it on time. And maybe they just need to adjust the stops 10 minutes one way or the other. So it's a great tool that betters the location, it betters the location manager, and it sets them up for success.
So we also wanted to start, talk about the startup process. It's already started, quite frankly. We've already started our internal calls on this. We've already set up our weekly calls with you on this. And actually, what the first thing we like to do is set up a meeting with the drivers as soon as possible after the board award, possibly the next week or the week after that. We want to give them the, we bring in a large team, give them a chance to ask all the questions they want. We want them to know they're staying whole, that it's going to be a good thing for them. And it's, after that, everybody's fine. This is a, this is actually a screenshot of a very lengthy file that we use for our weekly startup calls. We did this, I want to say about five years ago. Everything's five years ago. We started this process. Changeover is not a given. Transitions, it takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of focus. So what we, the brilliant thing that we did is we, really, it's our number two person in our company, our COO. He oversees this. And we have all the department heads of the company are on this call. About 50, 60 people are on the call. It's every week. And they go through each startup situation. And that way, if something, and Andrew, if he's got something that he's not liking on, the finger points to that department head, okay, we need to get this done. It's made a huge difference. We had five startups last year on the West Coast. Every single one of them went smooth. Right here in the Northwest, Battleground, it's a pretty sizable operation. They were down 40 drivers when we took it over in the summer. By day one, we were 100% operational. In Nine Mile over by Spokane, we took 100%, 100% of the drivers came on board with us. In fact, one of the driver's spouses went up to the superintendent and gave him a hug at one of the board meetings and thanked him for making the change. So another example I got to share, I mentioned Greg, I would talk about him again. Tacoma, they were actually with the incumbent you have. They had put out an RFP and then it was 60 days before the start of school, they came back to us and said, would you guys consider taking this over again? Because of our resources and our people, we took it over and we were up and running 100 buses by day one. So that's the kind of thing that we can do, you know, with the support of Kim and Greg and Andrew and all the people that we showed you up there. It's just the integrity of these folks is so, they make my job very easy, quite frankly. And so I'm very thankful for that. I think we have one more slide here. Yeah. Commitment, this is probably the most, I wanted to lead off with this one because this is perhaps the most important one, is our commitment to you. Andrew, you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yeah. So one of the things that, it's part of our weekly commitment, kind of goes back to our communication. One of your priorities is to be open in communicating. And that's what we do on a weekly basis. Our location manager will communicate with whatever person's appointed here, whether it be Heather or Dan or Kevin or Steve. There's a little private joke. I kept calling him Kevin and he called me Brad and I'm really Andrew and so anyways.
Just call him a different name every time you see him.
We communicate on a weekly basis. We send a report to them. And then even the transition team, Dustin, Heather, myself, Steve, Dan, we're going to be on the call on a weekly basis, just to kind of give a rundown of what we've done, where we're going, what we have yet to get done. We believe in communication. So just about a 10 second, my former career was, I was a public safety dispatcher for not only California Air Patrol, but I was a supervisor for the Anchorage Fire Department for 15 years. So I know how to communicate. When that fire hit, it didn't bother me. I was in the height of my glory. People, you know, the CEO actually called me and said, weren't you scared? I wasn't. I guess I thrive on that kind of stuff. I thrive on making things happen. So I'm really pleased to be a part of a partnership with Silver Falls School District. I think you'll find, like I've told Steve, you'll probably get tired of me being around because I'm just me. I love driving out here. I didn't pay a bit of attention to the road. I looked at all the farms on the way out. So that's my heart.
And we're two minutes over. I'm sorry. Any questions?
Thanks, guys. Questions for them or for Steve?
Great presentation.
Thank you so much.
There was a lot of ours, I'm sure, with the committee. We appreciate that above and beyond. And we're really excited.
I just wanted to say thank you, Tom, for your work on that. And thank you for your commitment to communication. It's a hard thing to be in this position and not, and have a contractor that's doing the bus service because we feel like we don't have as much insight. And we don't know what levers to push in order to get better performance for our families. So I appreciate your commitment to communication because we do want the best performance possible for our families. So thank you very much.
You got my business card. You can push my buttons anytime. I welcome that. I'll find a solution.
He'll come and present anytime to you guys. It's a pleasure to do that.
Absolutely.
Well, I just want to say, I really like the technology angle. I'm kind of a technology guy myself. And, you know, we would have found tremendous value, my older sons would, who were out of high school, long out of high school, but they would have said, yeah, I want that notification. You know, it's a quarter-mile driveway we live on. So they walk out in the rain or in the whatever, and they're standing out there, and they're standing out there. And pretty soon, they finally walk back to the house and go, what happened? Well, the bus never came. Or did you miss it? I don't think so. You know, that'd been fantastic for, and we're not alone out here. There's an awful lot of families in this district that would have a similar situation.
It is different times. We live in now to Jonathan, from 20 years ago, you didn't worry about your child being picked up by a stranger. When I was a young kid, I got worried about trying to miss the bus purposely so I could sit at school and the neighbor down the road seeing me and picking me up and taking me to school.
Right.
Yeah, that's not the way it is anymore. It's just not the way it is.
You can see your FedEx package is, you know, going to be delivered soon. What about our kids?
Yeah, that's a great point. I love it.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks. Thanks, guys. And I just want to say thanks for Steve. He set up a great process.
Yeah.
Great team. I wasn't there for the final interviews, so I never got to meet you guys until now, but I was there for all the scoring and stuff. And great team, everybody. So good thorough process. So thank you so much.
I can tell you, the entire First Student team, corporate region, is very thrilled to have you back. We really are. And Kim would be here and Greg would be here. They were heading up north, actually.
They're playing cross and stuff.
Jonathan, Jonathan, I wanted to publicly acknowledge the efforts of Heather Johnson and Kevin Palmer, especially this past year, year and a half. If it not, not for their efforts, we would have had a hard time running the routes. We even are. And the work that they do, and Dustin's going to be involved a little bit next year, along with First Students, going to be, you know, they're going to continue that effort. And I feel really good about the direction we're in.
Yeah, great. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
I had one question about just the timing of the transition. We said it was, it's 90 days, right? That it's starting now? Or is this going to, are we just basically going to start with them in September? Is that how everything's working? Or are we doing it before the end of the school year?
Well, the contract would officially begin July 1st. And that's when they would have access to our bus facility. There would be a service contract for services provided and a lease contract for the property we own, like we have with the current provider. All that planning starts now.
Right.
We've had conversations already, but again, it's not officially out of the gate until the board would approve a word on April 11th. But just to start getting things down and the things we need to consider, we actually have already had a conversation about what that would look like.
So we continue.
One of the tricky elements would be when we changed six years ago, we didn't have a full-fledged summer school, for example. So that's something that I'll have to talk to Mark at Durham about is, hey, are you going to provide? We don't know exactly how extensive summer school will be quite yet, but the state is allocating money like they did last year. And so we had a more robust summer school than we ever had. So if that's the case this summer, you know, is it going to be one provider doing the first couple of weeks and then we transition to the new? Or does the current provider want to go ahead and, you know, just provide service through the end of the regular school year? So those are the types of things that, and then, of course, the biggest thing would be getting in front of the drivers. The local Durham office staff, which there's three of them, we met with them last Monday and told them, but of course, it is the start of spring break, so we weren't able to get directly in front of the drivers. And the plan is to be able to speak with them on Wednesday. So.
We're not waiting for the board decision. I know that sounds kind of aggressive, but we've already got a date set aside, April 19th, to do a meeting with the drivers. We already have May 19, 20, and 21 set aside for the actual onboarding, where we have a complete team come in and the drivers come in and they get it all. So, you know, we're trusting, but we don't have time to wait. We just got to keep moving on and get things dialed in because you can order internet now and it'll take you two months or three months to get it. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys.
Okay. This is going to move us to our budget committee applicant introductions. This is where we have the opportunity to do a brief, I'll say in-person, some are going to be virtual, meeting of our applicants. We have four positions that are going to be open. And we now have five applicants. I'm very grateful we got a few extra here. And I believe we're going to spend, let's just ballpark it at three to five minutes per person, just for introductions, just to get a sense of who they are that's a little bit beyond the written statements. So we're going to start, I think, with Stephanie. Is that right?
Yeah. There you go. Hello. Nice to see you guys. Sorry, I didn't get in person with you. I'm Stephanie Monte. Our family has lived in the Silver Falls School District for about 11 years. We have two students attending the high school. One is a junior, one is a sophomore. And then we also have two at Pratom Elementary. I applied to be on the Budget Committee because I'd like to be more involved in our district. Budget Committee? Why? Everybody asks. Nobody likes math, but I love math. I studied math in college and have done all of our personal finance and our small farm finances and budgeting for the past, I mean, we've been married for almost 21 years. So all that time. I really enjoy numbers and problem solving. I've worked also at Pratom Elementary, helping out with kids doing math there. And so all the problems when the kids can't figure them out are my favorite thing to do. So I look forward to looking at numbers, kind of seeing what we can do. I lost my spot. I was also a treasurer for our parent club for a few years. This last summer, I was able to be a part of the K8 work group with the district. And it was amazing to be a part of a work group in that way. I was so encouraged to see how every single person had unique input and suggestions and approaching the same topic, all because of their different backgrounds. I don't have a degree or a history of working with large budgets, but I still believe I have some valuable traits to bring to the committee. And being a part of that K8 work group encouraged me to do, to pursue that anyways. I know that there's a lot of challenges to our district currently with enrollment, the buildings, and more. And our budget is already extremely tight with not a lot of wiggle room. So creative solutions will need to be found. And I'd love the opportunity to be a part of that process. You have any questions for me? Like, I'm pretty simple.
No questions? All right. Well, thank you. We really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
And I think I've got Matt Plummer up next.
Hello?
Hi there.
You got me? All right. Well, hello, I'm Matt Plummer. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak with all of you. I know it's a tough role that you're all in, in a lot of time and effort. So I appreciate that. And thanks to Debbie for arranging this and the communications involved with setting this up. So I've been in Silverton for about eight years, married into a family that has been in the Silverton and Silver Falls School District for many generations. So kind of understand the history and the evolution that has taken place around here. And, you know, just that, that sort of thing. We have two children. Our oldest is in kindergarten at Robert Frost and our youngest will be in school in a couple more years. So, you know, just getting into this, this journey of school and excited about it. And, you know, as far as experience goes, have been a part of, you know, budget committees in the past. I know, Aaron, I served with you on the Silverton Budget Committee for a few years and, you know, understand that process and the responsibility involved in that. And, you know, definitely committed to a thorough reading and understanding of what the budget's involved, you know, the funding, the various departments, and, you know, generally just the responsibilities that go along with being a budget committee member. Areas that we do work on and areas that are off limits, you know, public meeting law, I understand all of that as well. You know, career-wise, have worked with a lot of different budgets, you know, similar to this where it's, you know, a lot of different departments, funding sources, being applied in different ways, where every dollar is spoken for. And to add dollars somewhere, you're taking dollars from somewhere else. And there's not just an excess fund that exists to throw more money at areas that you want. You know, can appreciate the goals that the board has in place and, you know, would work to reinforce those while listening to the public's voice and, you know, making sure that everybody's represented and, you know, compromising to get most of what people want and hopefully everything that people need. But that's about it for me.
Well, we really appreciate you sharing that with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, permit? Nope. Okay. All right. Next up, we have Roberta Bench Prince. Yeah, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Roberta Bench Prince. I grew up at Silverton as my second daughter. My parents operated this business here for 25-plus years. I finally had the opportunity to move back full-time to the community about 10 years ago. I have a daughter who's at Silverton High School graduating this year. I've really appreciated the excellent education she has gotten in this district. I was especially impressed how you guys handled the pandemic and those difficult decisions with our children. Since she is graduating, I have some extra time and I'm looking forward to getting more involved in my community. I was excited when I heard there was some positions open on the Budget Committee. I do have an educational background in both business and accounting. Professionally, I work for a nonprofit healthcare organization and revenue cycle. So I do have, I'm responsible for developing a budget, presenting it to my Budget Committee, monitoring it and keeping it on track. With the increasing tough economic times that they're predicting ahead, I mean, budget constraints are going to be ever more concerning. And I just would love to be part of the process to ensure that our children in this community continue this excellent education going forward.
Thank you. Any questions? I appreciate you coming and sharing. This really helps, at least. It certainly helps, at least it helps me, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next we have Wali.
Good evening. I think I know most of you, but I've been married to my wife Laura for 40 years, have four grown children, all who went through the Silver Falls School District, through Central Hall and through Silverton High School, all college graduates. Three of them currently live in the boundaries of Silver Falls School District right now, have eight grandchildren, so they've been busy the last few years. Six of them actually live in the district, they're all five and under, so we've got a whole slew of kids coming through the system here soon. Currently have one granddaughter at Victor Point kindergarten right now. I spent just under 32 years at Intel Corporation, where I managed major capital projects with multimillion-dollar budgets. I also had a chance to see different cultures, go around the world and see some of our plants in different parts of the world. After Intel, I worked for a large architectural engineering firm, who did a lot of business with companies that did business with Intel. So I managed the projects there for a while and also revamped their invoicing, their project controls, and the systems where they do, where they invoice projects, get the projects approved, change control, get that all worked out, because it was kind of a mess when I got there. I should've mentioned also, when I was at Intel, I was a senior member of the cost reduction team, where we looked at efficiencies throughout the corporation, looked for opportunities to save money, and looked for different avenues, especially in downtimes, of where we keep the revenue up. Currently, I'm raising blueberries and hazelnuts. I grew that business as I was working at Intel and SSOE. Currently on the Oregon Blueberry Commission. And then I do a little bit of consulting work, and I'm also working as a volunteer, a project manager for the parents called the Victor Point on a new play shift there, so.
Well, thanks, Wali.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks, Wali.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Wali.
All right. And then we have Lynn Carstensen.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, I'm Lynn Carstensen. I have lived in Silverton here for about five years now. Me and my family moved here in 2017. I grew up in a small town, a small farming community in eastern Washington. I actually went to a consolidated school district, where we had four communities that went to five different school buildings. I was way on one end of the district and had a 60-minute bus ride to school every day, so that's how I grew up. I worked for Northwest Farm Credit Services. I'm the Senior Vice President for our western Oregon lending region, which means that I manage, or my team manages, a billion-dollar loan portfolio, where we work with farmers and farm-related businesses, mostly here in the Willamette Valley, but the whole west side of the state. We have an operating annual budget of about $25 million. I have some experience with capital projects, including a new state lending hub that we're putting up in Salem. You can watch the progress if you drive by on Hawthorne Street, we're right by the Kettle Chips plant. It's going up. It looks really cool. It's gonna be awesome. And if you wanna manage a budget, come work for a co-op of 16,000 farmer members, if you wanna get challenged on expenses on a $13 million bill. Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this, and thanks for your guys' time. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Really appreciate it. Any questions? Okay. So the way that this is going to work is that at our next meeting, we're gonna be going through and appointing, we have four positions we have to appoint, and one of them is to pick up the remainder of a term of somebody who left the district, and the other three are a regular three-term appointment. So I think one of them's gonna be, so if any of you are specifically interested in the one year, it might be really helpful to let us know, so that otherwise, I think what we'll probably end up doing is voting to appoint the three, three-year term appointments, and then finish it off by voting for the last one.
And we're using DBEA as our guide for selecting applicants? Is that right, Jonathan?
Correct. Yes.
Know your DBEA, folks.
Correct. Which is attached, I believe, to the agenda. Yep. Right. Anything else from any board members on the process, on any part of this? No? Okay. All right. That's gonna move us to board zone redistricting. So as a, well, do you wanna give us the update? I was just gonna intro it, but you could probably intro it as well if you want.
Well, on board, as you, as you know, you've received the information, you've had it a week or so, and you're discussing it tonight. You'll be voting on it at the April regular board meeting. And what we did with board zone redistricting, it's because of the 2020 census data. And so we went back historically and wanted to know more about what happened in 2000 and 2010, so we went with Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, which is what Silver Falls School District used, the firm that Silver Falls School District used. And what we wanted was a similar package to what was used in the past. So part of that was the rationale that you received on the three alternatives. So you have three separate alternatives based on precinct data and future growth and all of that, and Debbie's prepared that, so you have hard copies in front of you there. So tonight is for discussion, and we wanted to give it to the board first to discuss before we go to any next step in having a presenter come in to answer questions, things like that, because there is a significant cost to this also. So I wanna make sure we're being prudent with financially as well. So having said that, Jonathan, I can turn it back to you.
Okay. Great. So what we've got are three alternatives that were drawn up. I think our working assumption is that one of these three will likely work for us, but that's part of this conversation, and at this point, let's just open it up, and hopefully people have had an opportunity to look at it and share any thoughts or concerns that they may have with any of the various alternatives. We will be voting to adopt one of them, hopefully one of them, unless there's an objection to all three somehow. Thoughts and comments from anybody?
Yeah, I was looking through the different scenarios, and I, in my opinion, in my thoughts, I was kind of drawn to alternative two as one of my more favorite scenarios here. The first thing that I really appreciate that it does is, number one, is trying to balance the population between all the different zones, and I think that really needs to be probably our number-one goal. You don't wanna have, you know, each zone with lopsided populations, and that's the first thing, and it balances the population as close to the target as possible. So I like that. I think it also kept our race and ethnicity balance currently to where we're at, which is also important in this. And also from a geographic standpoint, when you look at the map, I just think it looks a lot cleaner. I think it keeps things defined nicely. And I think it, when you look at where our zones are at now, it adjusts the population accordingly to keep our, keep within the target, but it doesn't move the, doesn't move the boundaries too crazily, in my opinion. It makes some tweaks to most of, if not all, the zones, but it's minor tweaks that keep it manageable and keep it similar to what we have now, while, again, balancing out the population distribution in all the zones. So I do, I do like alternative two as an option, and at least that's the one that's standing out in my mind.
Thank you.
I would just piggyback on that. Having this is very nice, better than a screen, to flip back and see. And that was my first impression, too, was that two seemed to be the most like, the geographic boundaries that we currently have. But I could be totally wrong on that. It's kind of a judgment thing.
Yeah. I, I looked at it, and I liked alternative one, but to be frank, all three of them are very acceptable to me, because the populations are balanced. It kind of accomplishes all the goals. We just got three different alternatives with three different shapes. I like the ones that seem to look more similar to the maps that we currently have, but that really, that's the only differentiating factor that I could really find. So, you know, for me, any of the three are acceptable, and, you know, if I had to vote right now, it'd be number one, but, you know, I'm curious to see what everyone else has to think.
And your reasoning is based on the geographic, the boundary?
Kind, yeah. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't broke, so I don't need to fix it. It just, you know, we had to just readjust things because of population changes, so it really, it just seemed to be, they're all fairly similar to the, to what we do now, they just different, different shifts, so.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
I kind of came away with an assessment that, you know, I could live with all of them, honestly, and I didn't necessarily think that, well, I think I liked two the best also. I don't really have super compelling arguments to make, other than, they just sort of spoke to me looking at the drawing, but again, I'm, I think I could probably live with all three of them. I don't have any, I looked at it this way, right? I think Tom had alluded to this, we sort of have to pinwheel out from town, and then we have a couple of large blocks that kind of sit outside of that. And they all maintained that concept, essentially. We didn't, we didn't dramatically shift things with any of them, so I was grateful for that. Other comments? Discussion? Anybody worried about bringing it to a vote in a few weeks? I think the most important thing to me is, if somebody felt that none of these were gonna be acceptable, that would be the most important thing to know. If we all are in, at least nodding our heads that, you know, we could go with one or more of these, I think we'll be in good shape.
Thumbs up.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll be in good shape. All right. So that brings us to the item that we added, which was a brief discussion about the superintendent evaluation planning process. Who wants to start us off?
Sure. So the reason why I wanted to talk about this tonight is because if we do want to change anything about our process, well, actually, even just to improve it, we really were kind of playing catch-up for the last couple of years, because first year was Scott's onboarding year, so we didn't have our evaluation plan until later. And then last year with COVID, we just kind of stepped, kept with the same calendar, but I think that it would improve the process if we were a little more intentional this upcoming year. And we also have talked about, or at least I have talked about in the past, maybe I needed to back up a little bit, during our last collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the certified union, there was an ask to have input into superintendent evaluation, and I don't know if you were there that day. Jonathan and I were serving as board members that day. But one of the things that, my opinion at that point at the table was, let's keep that kind of out of the CBA, but the board does have an opportunity to consider getting input from various groups during its evaluation process. And the tool that we have adopted has a section in that for, they call it a targeted feedback survey, I think. And if we wanted to pursue something like that, I think that we would wanna get information from OSBA soon, in order to consider if we wanted to move forward on that. And so I just wanted to kind of put that out there to see how people feel, because some behind-the-scenes work in terms of scheduling would probably have to happen between now and our next meeting. So anyway, just wanted to put that out there, like, the question is, do we wanna talk more about clarifying our process soon? That's the question.
I certainly support it. I guess I stuck to Mike. I certainly support it. I think, I think getting feedback, you know, one of the things that I do in my professional career, you know, we get feedback, I think Erin Newt talked about that as well, getting feedback from peers and from subordinates and from all around, right? I think it's an important part. One of the pieces that's important to me is that whatever this process looks like and however that information be gathered, it's just my opinion that that information should be fed back to the board and not have any direct sort of, I don't wanna say influence, that's the wrong word, it shouldn't have an influence if it comes back through us. But we're not adding seats to the table in terms of the evaluation process, I guess is how I would phrase it. So that's, that's my own opinion, but I think that's how it ought to work. So if we get feedback, I think it ought to be gathered, summarized, and brought to us as input to weigh into our own thinking in terms of how we would evaluate the superintendent.
I know that when I was on communications, they discussed 360 and evaluation, and I think that's, that would be a very positive thing to dovetail into what we do. And I think the other question is, do superintendent evaluations, is that sort of a living evaluation in that it kind of changes each year? Or is this just our opportunity to offer some more fine-tuning or extra tailoring as we see fit, as we move forward?
I think it is evergreen to that end. I think, you know, we as a board, on an annual basis, can revisit how we go about that process. Some of it's contractual, we're obligated to evaluate him, right? And we have policy that talks about evaluation, but I think there are some, some areas that we have ample opportunity to fine-tune.
Oh, great.
And to make, you know, corrective adjustments year over year.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I'm supportive of this, and Jennifer, I just wanna say, thank you. You're always very, this is clearly your baby, evaluation, and you're, you know, it's processed, it takes a long time to line things up, and you're, you're constantly thinking ahead about this. And I appreciate that.
Well, if anybody else wants it to be their baby, that's fine.
No.
It just is important to me that we do a good job.
Yes.
And I very appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
If I can add some constructive feedback, too, about maybe process, is that okay to talk about?
Well, I think, yes. And we don't have to talk about it now necessarily, but we, I think, having an extended time in an upcoming meeting to talk about it, but yes, process definitely needs to be addressed.
My quick comment will be, I'd like to see it a little bit more concise, in terms of the actual evaluation time when we do it in our public session. So I'll save my further comments for the next session.
And that's important for us to talk about. This is what we want our process to look like.
And to, excuse me, to Laura's point, we, that's something we can iterate on and improve year over year, right? That's in our, you know, we can give that feedback and try to tighten things up if that's what we see fit to do.
And Jonathan, you actually used the exact same phrase that was going through my mind about not adding a seat to the table, so, and I agree with that completely. I am all in favor of getting feedback, because I think that's an important, obviously, part of, part of our superintendent's role, and so helping us to understand how he's being, his relationship in that, I think is super important, so, yeah, I'm all in favor. I would also be in favor, I think, of at least considering whether, on the ranking, the, you know, the one through five, if we wanna try and put some descriptive to that, so we're all in the same understanding of what that means.
I agree.
So we can, is everybody okay with us moving forward then in potentially contracting with OSBA for like a presentation, basically, about this is what we do for the targeted feedback survey? Because they've developed this whole process with COSA, so that we can make decisions and get a little more clear about that? Is that, are we all good with that? Thank you.
Welcome that, yeah.
Okay. So we will have more conversations about what this looks like, including the idea of the 360, or whatever it's gonna be called.
Yeah. I don't know what the names are, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Anything else on this before we move on? Anything else on this before we move on? All right. If that's the case, we're going to move into executive session under GOR-S 1926602F, to consider information and records that are exempt by law from public inspection, and specifically, tonight, that's a sick leave bank request. With that, we will exit open session, and we'll just break for a few minutes while we set things up. Item which is consideration of a sick leave bank request.
I move to approve a sick leave bank request for up to 30 days for medical treatment for Michelle Livingston.
So, moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right. Well, that being said, moves us to our last item, which is to adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
Yay.